Yeah, gotta get started.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting for September 5th. Yeah, can you hear me now? Everybody good? Okay, yeah, Chris, you want to come on up? We'll go ahead and have the city clerk read the AB 361 statement, please.
The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for a deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link:
Thank you, Melissa. We'll go ahead and then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Gregory and please stand, remain standing for Pastor Pat to do an invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you send great comfort to the Martin family through this season. Lord, we ask your blessing on this meeting and on our leaders. They have great decisions before them. Father, as your son taught us to pray, Father, holy is your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, bless all our leaders with your heavenly wisdom. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And we'll have the city clerk call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fauch.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hammond.
Here. Now we'll go with staff introductions, beginning over on my right, Melissa.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator.
Karen Jackson, IT Technology.
Deidre Sess, Baranza, Capital Projects Engineer.
I'm Kevin Fortin, Community Services Director.
Mark Scandalis, Airport Manager.
Ty Lewis, City Manager.
Elizabeth Hull, City Attorney.
Very good, thank you. Next up is a report of closed session, which we did not have. Elizabeth, you want to explain?
Sure, so we had one item on the agenda for a closed session. It was regarding anticipated litigation, and we did not go into closed session, so there's nothing to report.
Very good. Next, we have presentations, and my honor to do the airport 50th anniversary proclamation. So, Tony, are you going to be up, or is...? Okay, come on up.
So this is a proclamation of the Passerables Municipal Airport 50th Anniversary and also General Aviation Appreciation Month, September 2023. Whereas in September of 1942, as part of the World War II effort, United States Marine Corps began construction of the airport, Passerables, and dedicated it as the Australia Army Airfield, April 8th, 1943. Whereas the August 23rd, 1947, the federal government transferred the land to the County of San Luis Obispo and used it as a commercial airport until 1974. Whereas on May 7th, 1973, the city of Passerables purchased the airport from the county for $1, hired its first airport manager, which I think was actually Chuck...
Miller.
Miller, correct, yeah. And then we had Roger Oxper, and we now have Mark Scandalis. So only three managers that I can remember in that 50 years. And I've been out there since 1979 myself, second home. The airport manager was created, First Airport Advisory Committee was also formed. Whereas the General Aviation and Passerables Municipal Airport specifically have had a significant impact locally since its purchase. The airport has become an economic driver for the region, with over 40 individual businesses housed at the airport, providing more than 700 jobs for the community. And whereas the General Aviation not only supports local economy, it also improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical health care, healthcare, and services for law enforcement, firefighting, military, and disaster relief. Also innovative technology like vertical takeoff and landing vehicles, and by transporting travelers to and from their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas 2023 marks the 50th year that the city of Passerables has operated the airport, and on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, which Tony has a lot to do with, the airport will host its 50th Anniversary Airport Day, commemorating the past accomplishments, honoring the past, present, and future of the Passerables Airport. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John R. Hammond, virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor Protem, and speaking on entire City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as General Aviation Appreciation Month and encourage all citizens of the city to attend Airport Day Saturday, the 23rd of September, to celebrate and continue our success as the airport of Passerables continues to grow. Appreciate very much, Tony, and here's a certificate. Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council for your continued support of the airport. I think the city has realized, or realized many, many years ago that a healthy airport is vital for a healthy city. And as a pilot and a user of the airport, I sincerely thank the city and the residents of the city, citizens of, for all their support. So thank you, and come out on September 23rd and enjoy a little birthday party.
All right, moving on, item two is going to be the Teen Center Grand Opening Highlights. Linda, pleasure, and Heather.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Protem Hammond. Linda Plesha, Recreation Services Manager, joined by Heather Stevenson, Recreation Contract Class Coordinator and Marketing Coordinator. We're here tonight to thank you for your support and to provide an update on the Teen Center at Centennial Park. As you know, we worked with our youth commissioners to establish a plan to transform our outdated meeting room into an active, engaging space for teens to enjoy after school. Together with grant funds from the Passerables Rec Foundation, Justin Winery, and Townsend Public Affairs, a workday with the commissioners, and a huge assist from our IT and facilities departments, we transformed this into this, and this into this. We finished in time to celebrate our ribbon cutting celebration on Saturday, August 19th, with all nine of our youth commissioners, Rec Foundation Board members, Councilman Gregory and Bosch, representatives from Congressman Jimmy Panetta, Assembly Member Don Addis, and Senator John Lehrer's offices, and our new partner, NCI Affiliates. And two days later, we had over 100 teens and adults join us for the official grand opening of the new Teen Center at Centennial Park. Let's take a closer look at what all the fuss is about. As you can see, we created several different zones to provide a variety of experiences at the center. The Chill Zone features a large built-in sofa and coffee table, perfect for a game of chess or checkers. The Eat Zone features our Teen Center Cafe. We're pleased to be working with NCI to provide food service. In addition to offering affordable after-school snacks, integrating individuals with physical and intellectual disabilities with Teen Center guests provides an opportunity for area teens to engage with people with differing needs. We have several play zones in the Teen Center. The air hockey pool table has been very popular. And the three 70-inch TVs loaded with age-appropriate video games have also been a huge hit. Correspondingly, we have activities in our gym open to all ages, including basketball, ping pong, badminton, footsall, and more. The response to the Teen Center has been greater than we expected. It has been truly wonderful to see 75 to 80 teens a day in the Teen Center and gymnasium. We are looking forward to growing this program to meet the needs and interests of more youth in our community. And now I'll turn it over to Heather Stevenson to present the rest of our report.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. As Linda mentioned, the response to the Teen Center has been tremendous. We're thrilled at what we've been seeing. So I thought I'd just take a few minutes and talk to you about what we've seen in the media, what the community members are saying, what parents are telling us, but most importantly, what the teens are saying. So media coverage for the grand opening and ribbon cutting, which happened on August 19th and 21st, was really tremendous. We were thrilled with the response. We had coverage from KSBY. The Tribune wrote a wonderful feature story. Passerables Press, Passerables Daily News, KPRL, and others covered all of those events. And what was even more exciting than seeing the word get spread to the community through the media was the opportunity for our youth commissioners to also be a part of that. So you can see in the picture in the middle, Praise Namoleme, who is our youth commission chairperson, was interviewed by KSBY. Many of our other youth commissioners had the opportunity to do that as well during the ribbon cutting celebration. We worked with them beforehand to talk about talking points, how to present themselves in an interview. All of them told us that they'd never been interviewed before for media. So it was a really great experience for all of them to learn about how that happens, and they did a fantastic job. I spoke with Mackenzie Diaz, who is a KSBY reporter who did that story just over the weekend, and she told me that she was thrilled to hear that 75 kids every day, teens, are coming into the Teen Center approximately, and she's really excited to come back and do another story. So if that's any indication of how the media coverage will continue, we're looking forward to it. The next thing I want to share is what we've heard from the community. It has been such a great response through social media, parents coming into the Teen Center. From day one, parents showed up, wanted to shake our hand and say, "Thank you for doing this for our children." One father even shared with us that he has a child who goes to Lewis Middle School, and they were even considering moving out of the community because there wasn't a place for their teen after-school to be. And since that time, they've discovered the Teen Center, and that child's been there every day and loving it. So it's been such a positive response from parents. Comments on social media, I just highlighted a few. We've seen some things that have popped up over and over. What a wonderful investment in our youth. The city cares about the youth in our community. Great job, Paso. This is part of what makes Paso special, this investment in our teens. The word "safe" comes up an awful lot. Parents are really excited to have a place where their children can be safe after school. And the word "need" fills a huge need. This was so needed. That's something that we hear a lot in the comments. So just wanted to share those really positive responses. They've all been positive, and we've been thrilled to see that. But enough about the grown-ups. Really, this Teen Center is about the teens. That's who it was designed for. So let's find out what they think. We've been hanging out every day. Our staff is there from the time it opens until long after, making sure that everybody is safe and having a good time. And I've had a chance to talk to a lot of the teens. And one of the things that surprised me most is that they say "thank you" a lot. They're so grateful for this space, and I don't think I was expecting that. "Thank you for having this for us. Thank you for being here." One of the boys told me that he loves hanging out with his friends because before the Teen Center, every day after school, he spent three or four hours in his dad's car waiting for him to finish work, and that was how he was spending his after-school hours. Now he comes to the Teen Center every day. So there's like pickup basketball games, there's impromptu concerts in our quad, there's a lot of happiness going on, a lot of smiles. And one of the fun things is kids are inviting their friends, so it's catching on. Like, "I had such a good time. I brought like three of my friends today, and we're going to come back every day." So it's been really wonderful to see that response. We're thrilled that the kids are loving it because it was designed with them in mind, and that's what's most important. So... This is our staff. We've loved being a part of launching this Teen Center. Every day, part of our staff is working in the Teen Center to make sure that we're meeting the teens. We're talking about what we can add and change to make it a space that makes them really happy. But most importantly, we want to just continue to meet that need and make it a safe place for the teens in our community. So if you haven't already had the pleasure of visiting us at Centennial Park at the Teen Center, we welcome you, community members, council members, and of course, city staff, to come and stop by and visit us. We're open Monday through Thursday from after-school until 5:00 PM. And the program is absolutely free. The only thing that children might need to bring money for is after-school snacks, which are very reasonably priced and also quite delicious, I can say firsthand. And the teens sign in when they arrive. And then after that, they can come and go as they please. That's the way that the program is working, and it seems to be working really well that way. And they added a little area at the bottom. If folks are interested in supporting the Teen Center, the Rec Foundation is where they can donate that QR code, or recfoundation.com is where they can go to the donation page and earmark their donation in the comments section for the Teen Center. And we are just so happy to have and be a part of this special new community gathering place for our teens. So thank you so much, and if anybody has any questions, Linda and I'd be happy to answer them.
I did have one. Is it, in other words, if you're 12, you're not a teen? Are you age-specific? Do you have to be a teen to be able to...?
So we're, it's mostly middle-school students and up. So if you're a sixth grader and you would like to come and you're 12, you are absolutely welcome. Mostly, the demographic that we've designed most of the programs for is 12 to like freshmen in high school.
That group, yeah.
We might see some 16-year-olds, but once they start to drive, that's not as much of an interest as them.
Any other questions with Heather?
Is there any chance for a second table?
What's that?
Is there a chance for a second table, pool table?
A bigger pool table, perhaps?
Maybe a second one, because the soccer, so, I mean, the hockey is so popular, so...
That is true. Well, we actually just heard from the pickleball players today, and they're donating money so that we can get another ping-pong table.
Ooh, that's good, too.
Which I know is one of your personal favorites, but yeah. So we're continuing to talk to the teens and ask them what they want, and we'll grow it in the way that they're most excited about.
That's a very, very beautiful project. Thank you.
Councilman Fauch.
So, great project. Really enjoyed stopping by, and thank you for all the hard work, and especially to the youth commissioners for making this happen. Any provision for the teens over at Flamsen Middle School? What, any updates on that situation?
Thanks for asking about the Flamsen teens. So we did reach out to the school district, and unfortunately, at this time, they can't provide busing. But they do have the Boys and Girls Club Teen Program on campus for those youth. And then if these are able to find transportation, the center's open to all young people. So we have private school students and Almanac students, and certainly Flamsen students if they're able to make their way to Centennial Park.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to offer my congratulations, having been one of your liaisons from the very beginning, and the involvement of staff in encouraging this, and the kids getting excited about it, and then doing what they have done. It's amazing with the space that you gave them. That was really almost like a wasted space until they started using it. And you're to be commended as well as they. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Linda, Heather, Gigi, well done. Again, being able to serve the east side of Paso now with something after school is really important. I think you definitely nailed it, so congratulations. Anybody in the public wish to make a comment to staff? Well done, Dale. Very good. All right, moving on. Then now we have Capital Projects' report, and that'll be Frida and Deidre, I believe, tag team.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. So I'm here to present our, by once a month, Public Works projects under construction. I'll start with the capital engineering projects. So if you recall, we started the 17th Street project that goes from Chestnut to Spring. Initially, it was supposed to just fix the road surface. Once the Bowerspec School was finished, we promised the community that we would follow it up to repair the road surface on Chestnut to Spring. However, in the meantime, we found out that the underground pipes under the street, the water and the sewer needed to be upgraded before we could finish the repair. So we started that. Last month, we finished the sewer. And this month, we're finishing up the water line. And here are some just pictures of the water line progress. And I'd like to report that we managed to finish the water line in front of Bowerspec School from Chestnut to Vine Street. Vine Street, we finished it as fast as we could so that we would be out of there when school started on August 18th. So that way, we didn't contribute to the first day of people dropping off their kids. So now the crew is working from Spring Street and going over to Vine Street. And these are some pictures of that progress. So in the next few days, as we finish the pipeline for the, construction of the pipeline for the water, we will begin to connect this new pipeline into the system, the old system. And so to do that, we will need to shut off the water service, obviously. We can't connect to something that's flowing with water, so we have to shut off the service. And so consequently, we have to do that in the evening hours so that we won't impede the businesses. And so we will provide a notice, and we'd likely begin about 9:50, 9:00 PM, when the businesses are about done and be finished by about 6:00 AM. And that's about at Spring Street, we will be doing that tie-in, and then also at Vine Street. And so we'll finish all the piping and everything probably end of this year, and then we will follow it up with the road repair. That includes sidewalk infill, upgrade the curbs and gutters, and the curb ramps to meet ADA, and all that was funded with the CDBG grant. And then we'll follow it up with the road repair surface, which is funded with the Measure J-20 funds that you authorize in January of this year. The next project is the Right Way Improvements, which is the new street at the airport. The new street has created some leasable property that Mark is able to solicit tenants for. So last month, I showed you pictures of the sewer, and this time, we're showing you the storm drain lines that's being completed. So the piping for Right Way should be completed by the end of September, and then we'll follow it up with the concrete curb, gutter, sidewalk, and then finally with paving, and then that should be done at that time. Here's the water lines. And then just to give you an update of some of our projects that's been in planning for a really long time. We did finally, were able to distribute the environmental documents for the Union Road PAED over crossing. And we had an August 17th open house. Over 30 people attended here at Council Chambers, and the comment period concluded last September. So here are just some photos. So we put the notices of the upcoming public hearing and soliciting public comments at various locations within the project site. That's what they look like. They were rather large. That's what they look like. They were rather large, difficult to read, but they were there. And then at the open house, like I said, we had over 30 people in attendance. And, and the comment period has concluded. And then we'll take those comments, respond to them, include it, add it to the final environmental documents, and then that should be completed. And here's just a reminder, this is the phase that the city is concentrating on getting built. This is the phase one. And so we have money set aside by Slocog and the city to do the final design. But we are pursuing getting money to acquire Right Way and also for construction for this over crossing. And these are just visual simulation of what it would look like once completed. So that's the over crossing. Highway 46 is down below. And here's from the above. The other project I just wanted to give an update on and that everyone's been interested is the Creston Road project. If you recall, we had a $600,000 grant from the state of California, and we were required to encumber that grant by June 30th, 2023. So we started, we prepared bid documents so that we would meet that deadline. Unfortunately, when the bid opening came, we had no bids. Nobody submitted a bid at all. And when I called several contractors in the area, they told me that they are way too busy. They have too many projects and they just cannot add anymore to their, to their backlog. However, they advised me that if I put the project again later this, later in the year, that they would, at that point, they would be finished with most of the projects. And then they'll be looking to put more projects that would be, that would allow them to move on to the next project. So that's what we're going to do. Because of the deadline, we did have to submit a request to the state of California to allow us to go past the date of encumbering it. And thank goodness that they gave us the permission so we can go ahead and postpone the project and be able to award that and be in construction early next year. So unfortunately, as we had promised, we would begin this summer, we just couldn't because we didn't have any, we did not receive any bids. And these are just, just a reminder what, what phase one is all about. Signal, pedestrian enhancement, sidewalks, curb ramps, and then repair rehabilitate pavement services. And we're already, we're also starting on phase two already because we do, we did receive a $3 million grant that requires us to meet that deadline. So we started final design of phase two, which includes the roundabout at Rolling Hills. I think that, and these are just pictures of Creston Road. So that's where the signal is going to go. And this is just an enhancement of a pedestrian crossing at Flamson. No, no, what's the other one? Lewis Middle School. All right. So with that, if you have any other questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to David Licaro.
All right. Thank you, Deidre. Questions of Deidre? Steve Strong? Deidre, I did have a question real quick.
Sure.
In that Caltrans meeting here in this chamber, I noticed that the, it's, the Union Road overcrossing is in two phases. And the second phase is where I guess they're going to do the on-ramp, on-ramp, off-ramp type portion of it. 2048 is what I saw on, on the poster. Really? What is the reason for that? I'm just curious if it's, this is more of connectivity coming from south to north. But I would assume it'd be cheaper to do the whole thing at one time. What, what was the thinking of splitting it in two phases?
Well, the first phase is about a $60 million project.
I was only impressed that it was always going to be a $53 million project for the whole thing.
That's, that's a comprehensive project with Right Way, construction management, a soils engineering testing, construction staking. That's a comprehensive cost. And, and that phase one should last, as far as traffic operations, is going to be good until 2045, 2048. And so the need to do the full interchange is not necessary until that time as far as traffic operations go, plus the funding of over, you know, additional money.
Wow. Okay. I just never thought they would split up a project that far apart from beginning to second phase.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all right, that's good. Well, at least we're getting something moving forward. David?
Good evening, council members. David Licaro, Public Works. I'm going to go as quick as I can through this. This is the Salinas River Emergency Rock Stabilization Project. So this all basically occurred with this last wet season that we had. And as you remember, it's pretty significant. We just completed this last week. This is located on North River Road. So you can see the picture on the left actually is from the December timeframe. We had a significant storm event that happened in December. As a result, it actually broke a water line. And that actually caused a lot of erosion over the roadway and, and carved out a, a big portion of that bank. So the water department actually moved quickly to get the necessary environmental permitting and started working on, on a fix, which came actually right before the January and March rain events. In the meantime, they actually found another erosion on the bank just adjacent to this other original one on the left. So the, the right picture shows a smaller portion of the bank eroding away. But we did have some concern that it was encroaching on the, the roadway, on the road shoulder there. And we wanted to make sure that we put the necessary things in place to protect that. So fast forward, here we are, working with the utilities and water department and as well as ourselves. We were able to obtain the necessary environmental permitting. We're able to obtain the necessary materials. And then, of course, secure a contractor that was able to install the rock. So you can see how much rock we got there on the left. We got about 800 tons of rock to, to place. The picture on the right shows them actually installing it from the bottom to the top. And the picture over here on the left shows basically how they did that with two different excavators with thumbs and placing it carefully on the slope to make sure that we covered that slope appropriately. They put in a, a fiber blanket underneath it to further protect the, the slope and then place the rock above it carefully. As a fitness result, you can see that we recovered most of the road shoulder there. And then obviously, the center in the right shows the insulation of the rock. Again, that was 800 tons of rocks. It was quite a bit to move around. And then again, as a final product here, this is actually pictures taken from the Salinas River bed looking up towards North River Road. And they completed that. So they started Monday. They were mobilizing over the weekend, and they finished up on Tuesday evening. So they made quick work of it. So, but we're pleased to say that that's done. We recovered our, our road shoulder there, and we're ready for the next wet season. So we'll see how that goes. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I did, actually. Funny, over the weekend, I, I was looking at a forecast for this winter's weather, and they're talking El Nino and atmospheric rivers, kind of like we had before.
Yes, sir.
Do you feel like we're in good shape with anything that might be thrown at us again along that riverbed at this point?
It's tough to tell. It's tough to speculate. I think we did pretty well, actually, this last wet season with all the work that we did during the summertime. But things like this happen. We have to deal with emergency situations where we're forced to do something quickly and, and try to make sure that we button something up appropriately so that we're ready to address the next wet season. But it's tough to tell.
This really wasn't caused by the river. It was caused by water coming over the top of the river.
One was the water coming over. The other one was because of the high river. But with the one that had the water line break, originally, we found more scouring because of the, the larger storm events that came in January and March. So rock stabilization, we needed to have that in place to further stabilize that slope.
Okay. Any more questions for David Licaro? Okay.
Thank you.
Frida?
Finally, Public Works Capital Improvement and Parks Projects. First, I am happy to report that the water feature at Uptown Family Park is complete. You, it used to be a sand and water play area. Now it is a state-of-the-art misting feature. You press the button, you see the, in the gold post in the middle, you press the button, and all those reeds have mists that come through and kids can run through them. This was a $177,000 grant from the state of California. We're just going through the maintenance period, but it's a really nice addition to that park. Also on Fire Station 3, we all know the story of delayed items, supply chain issues, and delays with PG&E and their schedule. But I'm also happy to report that power is now to the site. Yay. And we are expecting the arrival of the automatic transfer switch this week, which means we can get power to the building. Now, further, after we get power to the building, we still have to go through the testing and balancing process for all the systems in the station, but we're closer, which is really encouraging. And hope to have the fire station operational, I would say, end of this month, early next month. Other good news, today was a groundbreaking for the pump track at Barney Schwartz Park. This is a half a million dollar investment from REC Foundation to build a bicycle pump track just east of the lake at Barney Schwartz Park. The contractor will be actually starting activity next week. They have 140 working calendar days to complete the project. They don't expect it to take that long. So we will have an operating state-of-the-art bicycle part, bicycle pump track early next year. Still working on the bid documents for 4305 Second Wind Way, the law enforcement facilities. And contract documents are being finalized for the Veteran and Senior Center shade structure. Projects in design, progress on the pickleball court complex. The 90% plans were returned to the architect from our community development department with corrections. They are working on the 100% plan, so that is good, good news. That's the final step before we can go out to bid. New to this presentation is the new Corporation Yard and Utilities Building that we are in design for, be just adjacent to Fire Station 3. If you'll remember, the Corporation Yard on Riverside was sold in 2018, and we've been leasing that site ever since. With the development of the 4305 Second Wind Way property for PD and this other portion of the Fire Station property became available to include a utilities building for utility staff as well as utility billing, a facilities maintenance and landscape maintenance yard, and a, a new fleet facility, fleet maintenance facility. So we are just getting the entitlements package, being prepared for the Planning Commission. At the time this, this complex was first estimated, it was estimated that it was going to cost approximately $10 million to construct. But I'll have an updated estimate when we get closer and more detailed in planning. And finally, I just want to remind the community that the Celebration of Life for Mayor Steve Martin is scheduled for Wednesday, September 27th at 5:30 P. M. in the City Park gazebo. The Celebration of Life is, is going to be a very heartfelt evening of remembrance of all of Mayor Martin's contributions to the community. We will be featuring speeches, musical performances. And I'd also like to remind the community that there is a Steve Martin Memorial Fund that is being administered by REC Foundation. Anyone who wants to pay tribute to Mayor Martin can make a contribution directly to REC Foundation either online and noting in the comments section, Steve Martin Memorial Fund, or by sending a check here to City Hall made out to REC Foundation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, Frida. Thank you. Councilman Strong? Councilperson Brigger?
Yeah, Frida, on the pump track, what is the material?
It's an asphalt pump track.
Asphalt?
Yes.
Rubberized or just?
No, it's, so what, pump tracks are generally either dirt, asphalt, or concrete. We picked asphalt. REC Foundation authorized it for maintenance purposes. And it is a more economical solution than concrete. Dirt tends to be transformed by the users, and so asphalt was the most realistic choice.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Bausch? Yeah, I was going to mention out that groundbreaking this afternoon, maybe we forgot to put a little dispenser for Band-Aids on its, on the side. It's going to be good. I mean, I was really amazed. I guess this track is designed by some of the best in the world.
The track was designed by California Skate Parks, a world-renowned architectural firm who most recently did the skate park for the Tokyo Olympics.
Yeah, well done. It's going to be great.
Yep.
Thank you, Frida.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wishing to ask any questions of staff, please come forward.
Just a suggestion, add that September 27th to the end of your agenda. I don't want any of your councilmen violating the Brown Act.
Thank you, Dale. All right. All right, moving on then. We have item four, Chamber of Commerce Year-In Recap. Gina?
Good evening, council members and Mayor Protem Hammond. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Gina Fitzpatrick, President of the Passerables and Templeton Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. Thank you for having me. I get to share with you tonight a recap of our last year. And so with that, do you want, is it up here? Oh, there it is. Okay. Our mission, the Passerables and Templeton Chamber of Commerce promotes economic vitality, empowers leaders, champions businesses, fosters civic engagement, and honors our history. This is a list of our 21 board members. Many of you see these folks throughout the community. They are leaders in all different ways. To note, you'll see Robert Covrie is his name here. He's currently sitting on the Planning Commission for the City of Passerables. And he's actually our incoming chairman of the board. So his plate's full. Rich Clayton is our current chairman of the board, and we have many others that we all see and are familiar with throughout the community. Our history, the Chamber has been advocating for local businesses for 103 years. By developing and strengthening a network of businesses, the Chamber cultivates dedicated leaders who give their time, share their expertise, and strengthen the economic well-being of the Passerables community. 60% of local businesses are directly related to tourism and hospitality, and therefore, the Board of Directors prioritizes the Chamber's ability to offer an exceptional experience through our visitor services. We couldn't do this without our partners. So our partnerships are vast. I kept these just specific to San Luis Obispo County. So engagement with community stakeholders creates a nimble and action-oriented approach to our economic health and prosperity. We partner with the City of Passerables to advocate and strengthen the local tourism ecosystem. We partner with Travel Paso, the Passerables Wine Country Alliance, and Downtown Main Street Association as we work together to stimulate the tourism economy. And over the years, we've participated by engaging in fam tours, tourism summits, advocacy efforts, all on behalf of our tourism industry partners in Passerables. Visitor Services, the Visitor Center is the hub of information strategically located in the downtown square for traveling guests and residents alike. The Visitor Center promotes our diverse industries as well as unique experiences sought out by our guests. Our friendly team welcomes guests, fields group travel inquiries, and initiates bookings. We curate itineraries and create a high-touch experience for destination visitors. Once people arrive, they want to stay. They want to live in Passerables just like we do. So we provide personal assistance and offer relocation guides for individuals and businesses looking to make Passerables their home base. Just gave one out today, actually. Community Service, we employ three part-time team members, foster a community volunteer program, and we have successfully mentored three hospitality-focused interns over a five-year period. Overall, center support includes me, a CEO, a chief of staff, and five enthusiastic staff members. So oftentimes, when the Visitor Center is jam-packed, So oftentimes when the Visitor Center is jam-packed and the phones are ringing and there's 14 or 16 people out in the lobby, the rest of our staff is, staff is always welcome to jump in and visit with our guests. The Visitor Center is frequently used by our locals as we are asked to provide information on community happenings and make specific site referrals. And we often serve as a location for ticket sales and will call for many community events. The Visitor Center serves as a critical liaison for economic development in the city. From relocation to emerging industries to all things Paso, the team is a one-stop information source for the Passerables community and business services. So here is our year in review for the fiscal year 2022, '23. Believe it or not, we saw 20,000 walk-ins. We had 5,820 phone requests, 13,000 email requests, over 145,000 website visits. People that were potentially coming into town for a wedding or a family reunion, group travel. Sometimes that also includes corporate travel. We offer them welcome bags and they oftentimes request large quantities, so we gave out over 2,012 of those. 192 physical mailings left our office. We gave out 3,833 destination guides and then the PRWCA-specific guides and maps were over four, excuse me, 5,000. And then site referrals, the site referrals are always a hard one for us to estimate because in any given conversation, you, if somebody asks for a restaurant and a winery and something fun to do, you know, you figure that conversation alone, you're probably somewhere between eight to 20 different, you know, offerings that we've given. That said, we're estimating somewhere around 247,000. That's just the number of walk-ins and phone requests and kind of what we could earmark at the time. The Visitor Center experience itself, so if you've not been in the Visitor Center since 2021, it has an entirely new look and feel. It's been very, very well received, so we successfully completed the complete redesign of the Visitor Center in 2021. And we have the promotion of travel postcards. This was something that Travel Paso created in, during COVID in 2020. They brought these really cool postcards that we have in the Visitor Center. We actually mail them for people. So many of the postcards go, we send them out internationally and it's a way for us to brand Paso in, in other ways than what you would typically see. We love the program. We're happy to keep it going. Brand awareness through logo representation and sale of merchandise that reinforces the Paso brand in partnership with the Wine Alliance and Travel Paso. Distribution of the Wine Alliance Guide, which I referred to earlier. And then we also give out the Visit California Visitor Guide and State Map. Visit California is another one of our partners and it's been fun to see them promoting Passerables more and more. As well as Visit Slow Cow, they have a visitor's guide that we offer through the Visitor Center and our Central Coast Tourism Council Visitor Map. That's all of San Luis, includes all of San Luis Obispo County. Our international guests, we kept this to just the last, I believe this is only, this is the 12-month list. This was the calendar from last year in friends that we've seen from around the world. The number one most common visitor internationally comes from Canada, seconded by England and our friends from Australia. So it's been really fun for us to have a lot of different conversations in the Visitor Center. It's so interesting to us always to hear why they are here in Passerables, what brings them and where they're staying and how long they'll be here. Lots of them we find are actually visiting family, but they've met their family from other parts of the US. So they'll come in from, you know, the east and their family comes from the west coast and they, they meet in Passerables of all places. It's pretty spectacular. And next up is Leadership North County. This seems like an odd one to be bringing to you, but this is a program that I'm so excited to bring back. Leadership North County has been in place, there's been four graduating classes and unfortunately due to COVID, the program itself had kind of gotten quiet, I'll say. There wasn't a whole lot of excitement for it and so this is now under our umbrella at the Passerables and Templeton Chamber. We're really excited to bring it back. The Atascadero Chamber is still very much in support of this. The reason I brought it to you today is because the 20 participants that will be going to a retreat next weekend get to spend an entire day dedicated to tourism and hospitality as we highlight the advantages of welcoming visitors into Passerables. We will further expand on the many benefits tourism dollars brings to our thriving economy. And we think that this education is really necessary so that we can all look at this with a different lens. We're excited. Lastly, I just have two quotes. I won't read them both. I'll just pick one that were quotes that were said about our staff. So the staff is friendly and helpful and they have lots of information on local wineries and accommodations. If you're from far away like I am, not too familiar with the wineries around Passerables, make this Visitor Center your first stop and you will be as informed as a local. So this is fun. This is, thank you Travel Paso for the photo stock they had shared with us. It's always fun to hear compliments about your staff and, and get to hear that people come back. And it's so interesting too to hear the people that come into the Visitor Center every single time they're in Passerables. With that, I thank you and I'm open to any questions.
Well, I just want to say it's a key partner in Passerables economy. Your board and your leadership too, Gina, have been very well done and again, I appreciate it. And the report is very thorough. Clearly, I mean, there's some stats here that people don't even ever contact you, that you had an involvement for bringing them here too. So again, very well done.
Thank you.
Questions for Gina? Councilman Strong?
That question is just congratulations. It's been a wonderful year, especially considering all the challenges we've had this year. And I'm sure that you're looking forward to an even better one next year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Roush?
Thank you, Gina. Great presentation as always. Just a gentle challenge. I'm surprised I didn't see Poland on the list of countries who visitors.
Well, you know, we'll do some special marketing there. I'll talk to the Wine Alliance and Travel Paso.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Gregory?
Gina, congratulations also on your expansion.
Thank you.
It was seamless.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
I appreciate it very much.
Okay, this presentation, any items, anybody would like to have a question for Gina? Public? Okay, thank you, Gina. Oh, Dale, go ahead.
In 1982, I was a proud member of the Board of Directors of this chamber and I stayed a member until I retired. In 1983, it was the Chamber that actually started the first wine festival. And you know what's happened since then. And ever since then, all these other travels and tourist things actually blossomed out from the Chamber and Gina's been a big part of that. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Dale. Moving on, we have now general public comments. This is the time that public may address the council on items that are in the council's purview that are not scheduled on the agenda tonight. Anybody wishing to speak, bring yourselves to the podium and then also fill out a information card. You'll have three minutes. So anyone wishing to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Linda Becker and I'd like to make some comments because I think it's time that we stand up and say no more taxes. And I hope that the citizens of our community and our city council will join me in contacting representatives in Sacramento and the San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors. As you may know, Assembly Constitutional Amendment 1 and 13, known as ACA 1 and ACA 13, are a direct attack on Proposition 13. This would change the state constitution in order to lower the percentage of votes needed to raise taxes in California. Currently, Prop 13 requires two-thirds vote for all special taxes. However, ACA 113 would reduce the threshold and it weakens the protections that we, the people, have. These amendments are essentially a tax hike, which enables government to increase taxes without the same level of voter approval required in Proposition 13. It will lead to higher cost of living and tax burdens for California. It is an attack on homeowners, property owners, parents, grandparents. It will result in more residents leaving the state in search of places with lower costs and lower taxes. We need to stop the erosion of property tax protections that have been in place for many decades and I feel strongly we need to oppose these amendments. Any representative that votes for these amendments is voting to hike our taxes. I personally was shocked to see what my property taxes would be without the protection of Proposition 13. My property taxes would be more than I make in Social Security. Now let that sink in. So if you're interested and would like to look up your property taxes, what they would be like without the protection of Proposition 13, you can go online. I'll be glad to share the site with anyone. I know it's hard for you to comprehend if I just spew it off here from the podium. But also I think we need to contact our assemblyman, or assemblywoman, I should say, Don Addus and Senator John Laird. And let's not forget our Board of Supervisors. I think it's really important and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment. Moving on to agendas to be deferred, City Manager Lewis, do we have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. Brings us now to consent calendar. These are items that if somebody wishes to pull for discussion, they're not normally full report on them, but any council member or public wishing to pull an item, we'll go ahead and do that at this time. Councilman Strong? Gregor? Bausch?
I'd like to pull in 10 or just ask a question about it.
Okay, question on 10. We'll bring it to the public then real quick. Dale, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Yes, Dale Guston, number seven.
Number seven, pull.
I want to see the full report when they remove a 41-inch blue oak.
Okay. So let's go ahead then, if we don't mind, to ask the question of Councilman Bausch on item 10. Chris?
So getting a lot of calls and questions on why we might want to move the library from downtown to the Centennial Park. I just wanted to make sure we gave our, in Halaq 14, a chance to respond to that question. This isn't an approval to move anything yet. I just wanted her to have an opportunity to address that concern.
Yeah, of course. You're correct. There are currently no plans to move the library. What we have done or what we are in the process of doing is applying for a grant that would allow us to determine if it's feasible to consider a joint library, recreation, and resiliency center at Centennial Park. We continue to have the conversation about library expansion. Centennial Park actually is an older facility than the library and it's in need of a summer pair. We have issues with space here at City Hall and with the climate emergencies that we've been experiencing, we have a unique opportunity to apply for a grant that might allow us to see if it's feasible. If we do receive the grant and we conduct the study, that does not commit the city to building a library at Centennial Park, what it would allow us to do is to bring that back to city council to see if that would be a favorable option.
And it isn't, the primary purpose isn't for the library, but it's for a community resilience center.
Correct.
And the library may or may not be part of that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I did have one question on item six that I'd like to have Mark Scandellis, our Airport Manager, address real quick. This is, has to do with the pre-approved FAA grant offer for runway one and one-nine rehabilitation. And in there, it authorizes our, our money support from the grant to, from the city side to come from airport reserves. Can you tell us what our airport reserves is currently sitting at, Mark?
I'm going to have to check with Ryan about the.
Ryan, okay, sure.
But this is a, this is a reimbursement grant, so.
Right.
We would potentially pre-fund it for a few weeks until we got the, started to get the reimbursement.
Okay, this is not a matching part of it then. This is going to be just a borrow then pay back later?
Yeah, we do have a matching portion, which is 5% of the grant offer is what we have to match. Caltrans will match 5%.
And that's coming from our general fund for the airport, correct?
Uh, that's coming from the airport fund, not general fund.
Well, yeah, the airport's enterprise fund, right. Okay, that's fine. I just curious if we, I've never, I haven't heard that in a while, where our reserves are. Maybe, Ryan, do you have that number?
Good evening, Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director. We're in the middle of doing the audit right now, so this is just a quick of the envelope. As of June 30th, 2022, we're at about 3.5 million.
3.5 for the airport. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, and then let's go ahead and do this. Let's go ahead and take a vote with excluding item seven, which is where, yes, oh, sorry.
Hi, I had a quick question on number five regarding the landing fees at the airport while we were discussing that. Is that for transient parking? Is that for landing? So airplanes that have, are not a Passerables home airport? So it's only for outside of the area landing and is it a landing fee?
Transits, yeah, not, not home base.
Overnight.
Right, so Mark Scandellis, Airport Manager can answer.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Darcia Stebbins.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, so that is a collection of the airport's landing fees that we had recently adopted on the 1st of August. That would include aircraft over 6,000 pounds who are not based in Passerables. That excludes medical flights, excludes military, and excludes touch and goes as well.
Over 6,000 pounds?
Over 6,000 pounds. Yeah, if you're doing touch and goes and you're training at the airport, then people are not.
We need to.
But generally students are under 6,000 pounds. If you're flying a 172 that weighs 1,500 pounds.
It may be more appropriate for you to actually have a conversation with her and answer her questions correctly.
Yeah, if you're going to have further questions, we need to get you to come back. So are you pretty much satisfied, ma'am, then with the answers that we have? Okay, thank you, Mark. All right, so let's go ahead and pull seven for discussion after we vote on the consent calendar. So anybody having any further questions or discussion items?
I'm ready to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we approve consent items number one through six and eight through 10.
Second? Motion by Gregory, second by Strong. Any discussion? Okay, call for the question, Melissa?
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and now we'll go ahead and hear seven. And Darcy has that, or Darren looks like, okay.
Yes, thank you, Protem Hammond, members of the council. This is an oak tree in the front yard or in the side yard of a residence on Tulip Wood. It's a 41-inch tree. The arborist report provided various issues with the tree. As you can see from the photos above, there are some issues in the crotch of where those three large branches, scaffold branches come together, which is the concern. You can see the decay, the cavities, and then there's some cracking down the trunk areas, kind of showing that there's stress on each one of those scaffold branches. More specific information is here. The picture all the way to the right-hand side is showing decay at the bottom trunk level, at ground level. So not only up above in the crotch, but down below has decaying. And this is something that the arborist has reviewed and provided information recommending that this be removed given the proximity of the home and the hazards of, if any of the branches or limbs fall over that house. So that's why it's being brought to you tonight and we'd be happy to answer any further questions.
I'm assuming that we, the arborists did some borings also of the fullness of the trunk itself.
Correct. They use various tools to determine how much decay was there.
Got it. Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions of Darren? Dale, did you have any further questions of Darren? Come on up to the podium, please.
That is in all the pictures. There's another tree close by. My concern is that when they remove this big oak tree, that they don't disturb that other tree that is apparently healthy.
I'm sure the arborists will be definitely doing that. Darren?
We can definitely look into that and check in with the arborist to make sure that, with the removal, I mean, obviously, this close to the house, they're going to have to take precautions of removing that tree anyway, so definitely something we can look into. It's a good comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Darren. Any public comment further on this item? Bring it back to council, discussion and/or action.
I move that we approve the action item for item number seven.
And second. Again, Gregory and Strong, first and second. Any discussion? All right, call for the question. Madam, sir?
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on, report on items approved by consent and/or vote also. Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Our first item is the approval of the August 15th, 2023 City Council meeting minutes. Item number two is a receipt of the advisory body minutes for the planning commission for 328, 411, 523, 613, and 627, as well as the supplemental sales tax oversight committee that met on 517, 2023. Item number three is a receipt of the warrant register. Item number four is a regular recurring reaffirmation of resolution 23-018 in relation to Assembly Bill 361. Item number five is approval of contract to Altport Inc. for landing fee collection, which we briefly discussed a moment ago. Item number six also was discussed in brief, which is approval of the rehabilitation award of professional services agreement to Tartaglia Engineering for runway 1-19 and the amount not to exceed $600,000. Item number seven we just covered. Item number eight is the Landing Passerable School Reuse Project Consultation Agreement and Amendments for the Environmental, I'll spit it out, for the Environmental Impact Report and Traffic Impact Study. Item number nine, Engineering Services Contract to help out our community development team with engineering deficiencies, meaning that we're really light staffed right now. They're asking for a little bit of help to keep our projects flowing within the community. And last but not least was item number 10, which, and how it could discuss, which is a resilience center grant application and resolution. That concludes the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Mark Scandales, Airport Manager. We're here to talk about a very nuanced portion of the Airport Division fees, but important for the continued maintenance of the airport. So on August 1st of this year, the City Council unanimously adopted an update to the airport fees. The goals were to modernize the airport fees and provide a new revenue stream for the betterment of the airport, that being transient landings over 6,000 pounds, including exemptions for industry common, landing fee exemptions. Following the August 1st council meeting upon staff trying to prepare to implement these fees, it was determined one of the public comments that was incorporated as part of the City Council's motion creates ambiguity that could inhibit the airport's ability to collect fees and recover costs as originally intended. The language creates significant potential loopholes and unintended waivers for landing fees associated with clients of the city's fixed-based operator who requested the additional language. Equal application of these fees is paramount to ensuring the facility continues to meet the aviation community's expectations and the objectives of the City Council. Equal application of these fees also ensures that all users are paying their fair share towards operation and maintenance of the facility which they are impacting. So the original Airport Division fee footnote included industry common exemptions for landing fees that was over 6,000 pounds. Based aircraft are also exempt, military and medical flights, touch and goes as well, and then definitions on detail and clarifying language for things like acronyms. In addition to the footnote, the City Council resolution included language that essentially says the city can waive fees on a case-by-case basis if we see it necessary. So during public comment, we saw support for the updated fee structure with two additions. First was that parking fees are only applicable to public areas, not private lease sites. Tonight, city staff recommends we keep that language. That makes sense if you're leasing area from the airport and you're paying to maintain that area, the city is not entitled to parking fees for use of your own lease site. But the second one, city council, or city staff does not recommend we continue to keep it in our fee schedule. This one says that landing fees are not applicable to aircraft that lease ramp or hangar space from an airport tenant. In review of dozens of airport fee schedules, there is nothing, anything close to this. This language conflates the two ideas, landing fees and parking fees, and puts them together and says the final parking position of an aircraft dictates whether it should have a landing fee or not. This could inhibit the airport's ability to collect fees and maintain our taxiways and runways. So we do have parking fees and we have landing fees. They are two separate fees intended for two separate areas of the airport. In red, you can see 16.6 acres of public parking area at the airport. We assess parking fees to maintain those areas. And in blue, you can see 58.7 acres of runways and taxiways. We assess landing fees to maintain those areas. They are separate fees intended for separate areas of the airport. In addition to the blue and red areas, you can see green areas. This is 74.9 acres of land at the airport that is privately leased that has aeronautical access. If we continue to keep the language as adopted on the first, landing fees are not applicable to aircraft that lease ramp or hangar space from an airport tenant. Anyone parking regardless of their commercial operation status, the size of the aircraft would be exempt from landing fees for parking in the green areas.
Real quick, Mark, so that means then CDF AirTac would not have a landing fee?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
So some examples of who would be exempt from landing fees if we were to keep this language. First would be CalFire and CDF and the multiple commercial operators that work with them, Erickson Sky Crane Billings and Colsons. That is existing revenue source that we would lose. That's a lost revenue of $54,000 per year. Royal Air Force, we would lose that landing fee as well. This is the largest aircraft that operates at the airport. They lease hangar space from ACI Jet, one of our tenants, so we would lose that. That's $26,000 per year. The hangar, various hangar developments at the airport, you can see on the left-hand side, those are the green master leaseholders at the airport. They could incentivize parking on their lease site because they'd have the ability to waive the city's landing fee. This could create a situation where as a hangar becomes available, the master leaseholder keeps it for transient aircraft instead of based aircraft. And they'd be able to incentivize parking for transients instead of based. And on the right-hand side, we have a new executive hangar development that the City Council's approved on Lot 2. These will be the largest hangers at the airport. They will be able to house the largest aircraft that we can handle. One of the intents of this hangar development is for transient aircraft parking. So if we do have a transient commercial jet that's coming in and parks inside of this hangar overnight while they're on vacation for three or four days, they would be exempt from landing fees. Finally, this is just a various, commercial operators could operate out of the airport. They could lease land from a current airport tenant and be exempt from landing fees. One of the ones we think of right now is freight forwarding. We could have FedEx or UPS come into the airport, operate at the airport, and be exempt from landing fees. We would have no way to collect fees to recover their use of the airport. So the total fiscal impact of a potential lost revenue on aggregate is $164,000 per year if we keep this language. Existing revenue sources from CalFire and Royal Air Force, $54,000 per year and $26,000 per year, and the new revenue source that we adopted with the Airport Division fees update, that's transient landings over 6,000 pounds, would be about $84,000 per year. So for these reasons, staff recommends that we adopt clarifying language to the Airport Division fees footnote. In addition to the footnote presented by staff on August 1st, new additions to the footnote would include parking fees are applicable to aircraft on public areas only, not private lease sites, but we would not include landing fees are not applicable to aircraft that lease ramp or hangar space from an airport tenant. What this will do for us, it will eliminate the conflating of the two ideas, parking and landing fees, and it will also help in the equal application of fees to recover costs for people that are using our airport. I'd like to bring up Tony Gaspar from the Airport Commission to give a statement that I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Council and Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for having me, Tony Gaspar. So I've served on the Airport Commission since its inception, which is six years ago, and we discussed and debated, well, actually discussed, we didn't really debate too much, but this, the parking fee structure to great extent. And this, this language that was put in here is extremely harmful to the economics of the airport. I really want to encourage the council to adopt staff recommendation. Essentially, by doing so, you're preserving the income stream that the airport relies on. It's a very fair income stream. Landing fees are expected by aircraft over 6,000 feet. They get it. Generally, landing fees are not, are not industry standard for smaller airplanes like a Cessna 150 or planes under 6,000 feet. But this language will set the airport, if the current plan is adopted, policy, it will set the airport back financially a long ways. So I would encourage and ask the council to approve staff recommendation regarding the landing fees and the parking.
Very good, Tony. All right, that ends the report, Mark, or do you have more?
Yeah, I take any questions you may have.
Okay. Council, any questions? Start with Council, Bausch.
Mark, thanks for bringing that up. Can you review the origin of the, the language? Where did that come from?
That was, it brought forth by our fixed-based operator, ACI Jet, in public discussion. They, they wanted to have that, and that's what they brought in.
So is this something that's part of their operation in San Luis?
It is not. This is not included in the San Luis Obispo fee schedule.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yeah, could you go back to the, I just have a couple of questions on how this works. So there is a new executive hangar being built or being proposed. How would that affect them? Would the hangar operator be owned, the hangar, is it open, is it operated and owned by the people that own the jets or, because they would be fixed-based, or how does that work?
No, those, it's a private construction developer that's building the hangars. One of the intents is to, to use it for transient aircraft. So you could come in and say, I'd like to park inside for the weekend, and you'd be able to use that space.
So his intent is to provide a safe parking for the jet, basically?
Yeah, I think he would also have a mixture of a based aircraft if he could have as well, but one of the intentions is overnight park.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's just basically enterprise. Somebody wants to build a hangar large enough to put in and protect a very expensive jet and charge a little rent for it. That's, that's his business. So, okay, you know, I specifically, I personally am very cognizant of this, and in fact, I don't even land at some of the airports anymore that charge for landing fees, you know, on general aviation aircraft. It's just ridiculous, but that's what some of the cities are doing. So I want to make sure that our airport stays friendly and we attract, you know, those kind of folks to come. So, Councilman, further?
If I can ask Tony a question. So Tony, you think this would injure our ability to attract pilots?
So this, this fee, if you go with the staff's suggestion, is a modest fee that's, that's charged for aircraft over 6,000 feet, or 6,000 feet, 6,000 pounds. So these are, these are million-dollar planes, and the fee is very modest. It's a $40 fee, it's a $50 fee. If you fly into Santa Monica right now, people fly there, fly there all the time. It's a, it's a modest fee, and people fly in because they want to be there. This will not affect landings at Passerables at all. People with million-dollar jets don't care about $40 fees. They expect it.
All right, thank you.
Sir?
Just to put a bow on that, someone's going to collect that fee. That revenue stream will transfer from the city to the operator, somebody like, oh, I don't know, ACI. Somebody will collect that at some point. So there is no incentive for the city to give that up, that I can see.
I would agree, and it's, it's a, a landing fee is an accepted, at a certain weight class is an accepted expense that planes, a cost of flying that pilots and planes or owners expect when they're flying into an airport. It's generally not an occurring fee at the smaller weight classes because airports, that would deter, that would deter visiting if you, if you charged $20 for every small little Cessna that came in, little mom and pop came in, they might go somewhere else. But, but the larger planes of 6,000 pounds or more, they, they really, they don't, they don't really care.
Right. And the maintenance on, you know, aircraft that are less than 6,000 pounds to the airport physically is not much, it's minimal. There's not a whole lot of need for us to charge for those smaller aircraft for maintenance sake. One question I was going to have actually for Mark Scandales is that we just voted on item five, and you might explain how Altport actually works.
Yeah, so Altport is the airport's landing fee collection protocol that you guys just adopted. It is a revenue share model. So they will, for the first two years, it's 5% of fees collected, and if they perform on that contract, we will revisit it, and it would go up to 10% per year. So it is a revenue share model. It's revenue positive for the airport. We are not paying anything for those services.
So explain to the council really what Altport does for us as far as checking aircraft.
Oh, they, they will administer the program. So they will send the paper bills, they will email people, do the collections for the landing fees. So we'll have that new revenue stream without taking any staff time to administer the program.
Right, so Mark's not going to run around chasing aircraft around saying you owe us such and such. It's all done through the end number, it's all on computer. We know who they were, where they went, where they came from, and it automatically sends a bill to them to recover our fees.
Correct.
Basically, very well done. I, yeah, it's being used by all the other airports, or a lot of them anyway.
Sometimes we get a plane that, when it arrives, we have to decommission it and put it on display. But when the Tomcat came in, which was the plane used in Top Gun, the pilots had to burn off some fuel because they can't reuse the fuel afterwards. So they did a touch and go, and that was a dramatic thing when they did that touch and go in front of the airport terminal. I mean, that plane just went straight up. Later on, I talked to the pilots and that. But I think if we get a plane coming in like that, it ought to be exempt from the landing fee.
As far as I can say, something about that, it's a sound of freedom, and we're all paying that bill regardless for that aircraft to be there. But, okay, let's bring it back then to council for and/or discussion.
Before discussion, we need, can you just close the public hearing?
Oh, yep, got it. I will go ahead and pull and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
I'll go ahead and say a few things here.
Sure.
My, my only concern was this is that it's, seems fair to, to the public flyers that come here, and Mark did a nice job and everything. So if it's fair and reasonable and it's not unusual, I'm okay to approve. And so I would like to make a recommendation of option two, adopt the clarifying language to the Airport Division fees footnote to be included in the city's comprehensive fee schedule. In addition to the footnote presented by staff on August 1st, 2023, new additions to the footnote will only include parking fees applicable to aircraft on public parking areas only, not private lease sites. The prior public comment was that they incorporated into the motion that landing fees were not applicable to aircraft that lease ramp and hangar space from an airport tenant will not be included in the updated fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by Gregory, second by Bausch. Any discussion? Okay, let's have a call for the question.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. All right. Moving on to discussion items. We have the unfortunate duty to do this. It's going to be options for filing for mayor vacancy due to death of Mayor Martin. And I'll turn it over to staff, Ty or Elizabeth, if you want to explain what we have to do here.
Absolutely. So with Mayor, Mayor Martin's passing a few weeks ago, the seat of mayor became vacant. And as a result, you have two choices. The council can either appoint someone to fill that seat, or you can call for a special election. If you call for a special election, you have two choices. You could do an all mail-in ballot, or you could consolidate with the general election on March 5th next year. We gave you some information in the report about the costs associated with that. There are some challenges with the special election. The county has concerns, they won't be able to assist us if we do the mail-in ballot, so we'd have to find a consultant to, and research that and get some help with conducting that. It's not something staff has ever done before. If you call for a special election, you could call for the special election and consolidate that with the election scheduled for March 5th. And the county has estimated the cost to be around $80,000 to $100,000, but we'd have to get more precise numbers if you went that way. Alternatively, you can appoint someone, you can invite interviews or invite applications, you can come up with names on your own, you can appoint someone from the council, whatever path you wanted to take, we would be able to work out. So tonight, we're looking for direction from you on how you want to proceed, if you want to do an appointment or invite interviews and applications. Then we would come back probably at a special meeting within the next week or two to follow up on that. If you want to do the special election, there are some resolutions and things that need to be adopted, so we would follow up procedurally. You have 60 days from the date that the seat became vacant to make an appointment. If you do not make an appointment, you must call a special election. So your deadline for the appointment process, whether you appoint someone from this council to serve, or you invite applications, however you want to proceed, that deadline is October 13th.
Okay.
And I can answer any other additional questions you may have.
Right, okay. So anybody having questions then, from Elizabeth, go ahead. Councilman Vausch?
So just a clarifying question on the special election. The 60 days only applies to the appointment?
Correct.
The election could take place March 5th, 2024.
It would have to take place March 5th, 2024.
Unless we wanted to pay for a special election.
Even if you pay for a special election, it still has to be on that same date. There was a change in the law a year or so ago, so you would have to call a special election. The special election would be set, it has to be 114 days after you call it, and then on the same day as the next.
So you have to backdate it from, from March 5th. Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Councilman Strong?
Yes, my, my question is, and so we just sit with four people in the meantime?
Yes.
Until March of next year?
Until March of next year, unless you choose an appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I just, that was, that was my question, is what happens between now and then if we wait, so. And then as far as the appointment process, there's no easy way to do that or talk about it.
The law doesn't set it out. So I described in your staff report sort of a, a typical process that some institutions have followed, you know, invite people to apply, you know, have an, an application period open, invite people to apply. Other councils have chosen to choose one of their existing members into the mayor's position for consistency and sort of continuity, and then fill the seat that then becomes vacant. I had another council who all showed up at the special meeting with names in their head of people who they were interested in, you know, and then they debated those and made an appointment that way. So there's really no guidelines, you, you can do almost anything you want. And, you know, we're just here to help provide guidance and, and move that process forward.
So I think at this point, it's best to have the public comment and then make our discussion.
Unless there's additional questions.
Any questions, further questions from council at this point?
All right, I think just the observation that with an election on March 5th, we would still wait the, until that, that election was certified, and then the time for that person to be sworn in.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and open it up then to the public, and we'll check anybody online too, Melissa, but anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward.
Michael Rivera, P O Box 3134. You know, I almost feel like in The Invisible One, I'm the only one in this last election cycle who ran. I got over 4,700 votes. So there are 4,700 plus people that are constituent base. God rest his soul, Steve Martin obviously beat me, and I accepted that. However, he's not here now. You know, I, I, I feel almost, it's sad that we're in this position to lose the mayor. I never had any ill will with Mr. Martin. We had policy disagreements, obviously, and I felt it was time for change. And if you, if you really think about it, sometimes you need a different point of view on your city council, a new look, a new observation, a new way to maybe consider some of the needs of Robles, which was my platform. And so with that being said, you have a decision to make. Obviously, I believe I should be appointed mayor because I was the only one who ran. The other two seats, there was nobody who ran, and we ran hard, and we had a group of people who supported me. And I would hope that fairness would actually come to this council and understand that you don't want to disenfranchise 4,700 people. And by the way, God bless them, but I did beat Steve at the polls for people who showed up, almost three to one. But then those mail-in votes came in. Here we are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michael. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sandy Triggs. I don't know what your history or your tradition is for replacing someone with a, when you have a vacancy, but Mr. Harmon has been filling in for many months, seems like almost the whole time. He doesn't have a training period or breaking in or a learning curve. Everything's been going along smoothly. It seems like with everything that's going on, it'd just be easier to leave him where he is, and then you'll appoint somebody else. My big thing is, I'm hoping that you don't do the same thing that the Passerobles School District did and incur a whole bunch of costs for kind of nothing. We have a lot of people who are willing to serve and would be good at it, and it just seems like right now we need continuity. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, Darsha Stevins again. I am here to speak concerning the election, having a special election and the costs, as Sandy Triggs just mentioned. The cost of the Passerobles School District was, what the county charged was over $307,000. Now, I take issue with the costs that are involved in $307,000. $217,000 was for labor alone. I'm glad to hear that it sounds like with an all-male ballot election that it would be $80,000 to $100,000. I still have serious concerns about an all-male ballot. Sorry, I just had this thought that all male versus all female, but that's beside the point. But we'll call it a vote-by-mail ballot. In that, if you're, if you're conducting the election at the same time you're conducting the primary election, you will already have polling places. You will have people that can vote in person. I want to promote voting in person on Election Day. It is called for in our constitution, the time, manner, and place should be where you can be observed, and it can be observed in public. So we have one issue of the cost, and the Passerobles, I think San Miguel was also estimated to be, I think they had 1,500 registered voters, and it was going to be something like $173,000. You need to know about this. It's another government agency, but this is just completely ridiculous. I'll volunteer to run it if you want to run it, I can run it for the cost of printing the ballots. I am a CPA, an accountant. And I also had issue with the process. So I, I think the appointment process can work. I think if you want to, it shouldn't necessarily be just a cost feature, because in the end, you could end up costing you a far greater amount than just the cost of the election. But I, I say try to hold, be an example, try to hold a one-day-only election day, vote, instead of using the vote-by-mail ballots, do it count by hand, you'd have results in hours, it would be beautiful, and you'd be able to have people come out and participate in their elections process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dale Augustine, I'm using 630 13th Street now, changed my residence, but I don't think I want this job. But I'm the only one that's really attended all the meetings and knows what goes on in this city. And I have a concern about that. The, when Mayor Martin moved up from council position to be a mayor, they left a vacancy for a council position. Now, Dwayne Pacanso was the next highest vote getter, but you didn't. You appointed Steve Gregory, who was way down on the list, and he ran for reelection when his term was up. So there is no set law on how you do this. It's your choice. As pointed out, the election law is different than the education law. Kitty Enney fell victim of the education law. You're not under the educational law, you're under the election law. You can appoint and it will stick. It was, nobody can bring a petition to have that person removed and run a special election, as happened in the school district. So thank goodness you guys aren't in there, under an antiquated law that doesn't make sense. Good luck.
Thank you. Linda?
Welcome.
Hi, Linda Becker. In looking at the options for filling this vacancy, I would urge our city council to appoint the current mayor pro tem, John Hammond. He's been functioning in this capacity for quite some time now. And I think that holding a special election is an unnecessary expense. When we look at holding a special election, to me, it's just a waste of money, it's a waste of resources. Those mail-in ballots, a lot of them don't get returned, there's a lot of paper waste, it's postage money we don't need to be spending. And I believe that our county clerk recorder has actually stated that the least expensive way to hold an election is to allow us to vote in person. I like the option of voting in person rather than wasting money and resources on mail-in ballots. You know, let's streamline the processes. If we have to go to an election, it should be a one-day vote. And again, I, I think Mr. Hammond's been doing that job, and we should consider appointing him.
Thank you.
Morning, ma'am.
Jeff Carr, Passerobles. First off, I, I'm thinking, trying to get an idea of the costs again. I've heard $8,000 and $100,000, and then some undetermined staff costs. So I thought it might be better if we could get a better handle on what the actual costs of an election would be, because I wouldn't want to discount that idea completely, because there's still, even in March, there'll be like two and a half years, I believe, of the term left, that's a pretty good length of time. And, yeah, I know elections are expensive, but that's, I consider that the cost of our democratic process, that's just what it costs. And, you know, I'm not totally against any kind of an appointment or such, but I would, I would not discount that, that avenue. The other question I have is, I know in the, the staff report, they mentioned the, you could fill an appointed interim mayor, but then you referred to the, well, there's no time, we have to do it before the 60-day period. Well, if you don't do an appointment and you're going to do the election, then that time limit's gone. Why can't you just have an interim until the election is finalized? So then, because I get the impression, well, maybe people don't want to wait with just four people on the, on the council, so why, if you were to choose an election, why couldn't you have an interim until that point? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public further in our room? Melissa, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back then for, you have one more? Yeah, go ahead, let's, let's address it.
So Darsha Stevins again, thank you. I will treat that as not as public comment, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those if I can. So for consideration, the Passerobles Joint Unified School District had 30,705 registered voters. At the cost of $307,000 per ballot was about $10, but there were 12,000 votes. That was also a polling place, and so there were precincts available for people to come vote in person. It was not an all-vote-by-mail ballot. The cost per vote was about $25 per vote. For the San Miguel, the estimate with 1,500 voters and registered voters and 173,000, it's, I don't even want to give you the number. But if you have an all-vote-by-mail ballot, which I would not recommend, I think it disenfranchises voters that want to vote in person, even at $100,000, $100,000. And there are 18,558 registered voters in the Passerobles City Council in the November election. So that was the number that I thought might be significant to you. That would be $5.39 per ballot, per registered voter, is what you would have with 18,000, using 100,000, so figure $5 or so per ballot. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for that data. Thank you.
And just for clarification, for the record, that, that is actually additional public comment.
All right, we'll bring it back then to council to, to open up discussion on this. Essentially, we have several ways to go, but what's laid out here from Elizabeth is, you know, two options, either appointment or special election. So let's take that first question, I think, to get that on the table and, and get a direction. So open up our discussion.
So I'll go ahead and start, if you don't mind. I, I personally like the idea of appointment of an existing person on council. And the reason for that is that we weren't working well together for a long time, we're operating well, and we have the skill and the ability to do so, as mentioned by a couple of people about Mayor, Mayor Protem Hammond. It also continues to help us move along as a council, and I think it's a really good way to go because there's, there's no, no waiting. It's, it happens, and I just, I like that method the best because I'm used to working with everybody here, and I think that Mr. Hammond could do a good job if that's what he wants to do. But I think it's important to bring solidarity to our council and our city and not, not rock the boat, so to speak, and keep, keep our business. the boat, so to speak, and keep our business going forward in a good way.
Okay, so Steve, you're advocating basically to go to an appointment basis?
Yes, someone on council, thank you.
Councilman Strong.
Yes, and, yes, I'd agree with the appointment basis. And I would like to say that if we do appoint somebody on the council right now, that would open that seat, and we would get a new person and new ideas. So refreshing, new ideas would still come into this council at least 20% on that method, as well as if we went to an election. So I would say there's no problem during the appointment.
Okay.
We have to make a decision, that's all.
Yep. Councilman Bausch.
I too believe that at this point, for the, just talking about replacing Mayor Martin, an appointment is the appropriate methodology at this point. The continuity, I like council member Gregory's term solidarity. I think we need that for both the citizens of Paso Robles and for our staff, our employees, having a mayor sooner than later makes a lot of sense. I think that's the whole purpose of having a mayor pro tem, is someone to be at the ready to take over. You've done a great job, and you have exemplified trying to strike a good balance. Appointment would save an awful lot of money. I appreciate Darsha bringing the numbers forward. I don't, I know that the numbers that we get from the clerk recorder's office are well intentioned, but they just seem woefully low. And I think that we exceed that $80,000 or $100,000, you know, heartbeat. If we can save that money, put it to better use, we should. If we can come to a conclusion on that, I would like to see that process happen as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And I would like council to advise us on how fast we can move.
So let's take this then, it sounds like we have, and I would agree that appointment is where I prefer to do it, for the speediness and the cost effectiveness to the city and the taxpayers. So can we all agree then, at this point, that we want to go down the appointment option?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is then, who do we want to discuss about? I mean, there's been discussion here about myself, but...
I don't think we can do that legally.
Go ahead.
I think you can have a discussion about what process you want to follow. So if your process that you want to follow is to appoint someone from the council, you could make that decision tonight. We could schedule a special meeting for two days from now. We'd need 24 hours' notice. Would probably be the soonest we could get it done, but we could schedule a special meeting to follow through with an appointment if you wanted to pull someone off the council and make that appointment. If you wanted to follow a different appointment process, then I'd need some additional direction from you as to what that process might look like for our timing purposes.
I had a question on that. Let's say that we went that route and did it to stay in 48 hours. Then if we do appoint somebody from the council, then there's going to be a vacancy in one of the districts.
Correct.
So at that time, we would still have to put an agenda item on the next council in order to set either an appointment process or an election for that vacancy. Is that correct?
We could probably do it all at one special meeting. If you were to tell me tonight that your intention is to appoint someone off of this council to serve, we could schedule a special meeting for next Tuesday, and I'm just picking a date, just so we can talk. So next Tuesday, we would have an agenda item. The first item would be to appoint the mayoral position from the council, and then the next item would be to discuss the process, appointment or election, to replace that vacancy that's now been created. We won't know what district is free, right, is vacant until that point in time, but you could then have an item like tonight's that says process, and then your next meeting would be to do an appointment or election or whatever you tell me to do based upon that process decision that you make.
Thank you very much.
And then the way I read your agenda item, Elizabeth, is that whoever that council seat's appointment is only serves until the end of the next general election or beginning. In other words, about a year and a half, November 24.
Depends.
It depends. So who's ever appointed to fill the mayor's seat serves until the end of the mayor's term.
To the end of that one, correct.
If someone was just elected, and so they'd be in the first half of their term, they would serve until the next general election. If it was a position that's already in the second, finishing the first half of their term and into the second half, then they would serve till the end.
I see, so it really depends on...
It depends on who gets appointed and how much time is left on their term.
So in that particular case, no matter who it is, so no matter who it is, they'd be, have to go up for reelection, for election in next year.
Yes.
In November of next year.
Yes.
Thank you.
So really, like I said, that's why I'm trying to take this in pieces, so we can move ahead and...
One step at a time.
Get a direction. So again, we've now agreed that we're going to do an appointment, and again, discussion then is next, and who are we going to appoint for the mayor's term. Councilman Bausch.
If we do an appointment, it sounds like that's the direction we're doing for mayor.
Yes.
And that would leave the vacancy for, if that appointment comes from the council, that would leave a vacancy for the council member's seat. It sounds like we can discuss the procedure to adopt at the next meeting, at the next When would we be able to swear in the mayor?
At that meeting.
At that same special meeting. Okay. And you would be able to advise whoever sets the agenda, the hierarchy of that order? Would you appoint that person, swear in, and then have the next?
Correct.
Okay.
Because as soon as they're sworn in...
Then you would have the discussion about replacing.
Yep.
Got it. And then we'd have to find out from staff when they could do. We have Lee coming up, so one who would be able to do applications and interviews and all that, that might have to be...
So we had some thoughts. I think Melissa may have some dates for a tentative special meeting if you wanted to do that. And then you could do the appointment, and then we would, at that point, we'd have to figure out the process, the timing for applications and things for whatever seat became vacant.
I'd like to hear though, if that's appropriate to, for her to describe that tonight.
Sure.
Thanks.
So could we do that next meeting as soon as Thursday?
She's got some dates for you based upon the calendar.
So in looking at the calendar to determine potentials, timing-wise, we could do a special meeting this Thursday evening at 6:30 to do step one. In looking at your calendars out a little bit further, the next potential opportunity would be Monday, the 18th, which would be just ahead of you all leaving for the Cal Cities Annual Conference. And beyond that, if we're looking further out in the calendar, the next available option would be our regular meeting that's scheduled for Tuesday, the 2nd of October, excuse me, the 3rd of October.
So Elizabeth, so the order of this would be, let's say if we take next Thursday, we select the mayor on Thursday, then we would know what district, and then we figure out how to appoint that person.
So Thursday night, you would then tell me whether you want to appoint or hold a special election to replace who's ever sitting in that council seat.
And to clarify, that would be this Thursday, the 7th.
The 7th, right. My question is, at that point, is it time-sensitive to fill the vacant council member's seat?
Again, you have 60 days. You got a whole new 60 days starting, if you did it on the 7th, and council member Strong, for example, was appointed, his seat becomes vacant on the 7th, you have 60 days to fill that seat.
Got it.
Or you hold a special election.
So it's still the 60-day...
It starts all over again.
Understood, okay. All right.
So the meeting on Monday, the 11th, would be for which purpose?
On Monday, the 18th.
18th, and we...
If we were to go Thursday evening and...
Or the 18th.
Right, or if we Thursday evening had a meeting and you appointed someone and then wanted to look for another special meeting date to do the next step, we could look at the 18th.
I have a question, is there anybody here who couldn't make Thursday's night meeting?
I can make Thursday.
You can't make it? Okay, so could I?
Elizabeth, are you available?
I would have to call in for that.
Zoom, yeah.
Teams or whatever, yeah.
Are you here?
And you can do it anytime of the day on Thursday, that works for you.
If we make that decision tonight, we can get that notice out immediately.
We'll get that notice out tomorrow.
All right.
So my question is, if you want to hold a special meeting on Thursday, the 7th?
I've seen you have a date.
Do we have time?
I'd make a motion to that effect.
Well, hang on, I'm almost going to say I've got Paso Basin cooperating, so it would have to be after 5 or 6, right?
We're looking at the time of 6:30.
6:30 on the 7th.
Right, I think that would be appropriate for me.
That's fine, for me too.
Good.
I'm good.
Good job.
Yeah.
So I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah.
And I'd say I so moved.
So that would be a motion to...
That's a motion to...
Pursue appointment of our election.
Pursue appointment, swearing in, and a decision on the process for filling the vacancy that's created.
On the 7th.
On the 7th.
For mayor.
At 6:30.
So we have a motion and a second, Gregory? Okay, good. Any discussion? All right, so I guess we'll call, real call on that, Melissa.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Bausch?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammond?
Hi.
Motion has been cast unanimously.
And just for clarification, that will be for an appointment from someone from the council.
Yep.
6:30.
On the 7th.
On the 7th.
So do we need to read the motion back just to be safe?
Nope, I think we got it.
Steph has it.
Make sure it was in agreement.
Thank you, guys. That works. All right, so we'll go ahead and close that item, and then move on now to City Manager Report, Ty Loos.
Thank you, council members. So in lieu of my comments tonight, I thought I'd talk to you all individually about a video that the city has prepared regarding some of the wonderful things we've done with our streets. And I understand that the debut was going to go out in the morning via press release, but I thought we'd give the community and the council members a sneak preview of the video staff helped produce. So with that, I will turn it over to our team.
Chris, all right.
If I may, sorry, if I may clarify, the video you're going to see tonight is regarding water.
Ah, I missed that. I thought you said the streets one was written.
Confused people, that's not asphalt.
That is, I need to open my ears.
For stepping in, but this is, there's been a lot of questions regarding the city's planning around water and as it relates to growth and demands on our water supply and drought and that sort of thing. So this was meant to help provide and fill in some of those gaps.
Paso Robles truly is a drought-resilient community. Recognizing that regular abundant rainfall is not a given in California, the city of Paso Robles has made key investments to improve drought resiliency, diversify local water supplies, and to ensure water system reliability. These investments have enhanced our quality of life while ensuring there is water to meet future growth and demands. Paso Robles is fortunate to have four distinct sources of water that provide a very reliable water supply for our community and help insulate the city from drought conditions. These sources are Lake Massimiento, the Salinas River, the Paso Robles groundwater basin, and a recycled water system. Through a combination of these sources, the city of Paso Robles has adequate water supplies to serve our existing population and support full community build-out. This includes the capacity to serve all new housing, hotels, and commercial projects planned in our community while maintaining an ample contingency of water supply to see us through extended drought periods. Although the state of California may impose water restrictions on all cities from time to time, rest assured, the city of Paso Robles has an adequate water supply. Regardless of whether drought conditions exist, the city always encourages residents and visitors to find opportunities to reduce water usage and conserve when possible. If you'd like to know more about the city's water supplies and water conservation, please go to wwwprcity.com/water.
Well done.
I have a question. Can we identify the narrator on that video?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Sounds like somebody's radio announcer voice.
Yeah, kind of. I will say too, you know, about our water portfolio, Christopher's here or whatever, but yeah, there you are, Christopher. 13, over 13,000 acre feet of water that our city has available to us, that build-out will only be about 9,500. So we have lots of extra water that could be used in different ways, of course, but we managed our water very, very well and thought way ahead. City has done very well.
And I do promise we have an asphalt video coming. We could have done like at the movies, a sneak, a roll of, you know, some teaser footage, but it's coming.
All right, is that all we have then for Ty on your side?
That's it.
Okay. All right, coming now to item S, Council Business and Committee Reports. Who would like to start? Councilman Strong?
Well, I really don't have anything great or a lot to report. I've had a lot of meetings, a lot of groundbreakings and grand openings and things of that nature, and a lot of discussions with individual citizens. And actually, I've been writing some articles for some of our neighborhood newsletters that I've been asked to submit. So many of my constituents have seen my reports on what we're doing in the city and also my personal relationship with our past mayor. And I was pleased to do all of those, and I look forward to tomorrow being, a charming morning, being down in San Luis Obispo at the Regional Transit Authority, and we'll be handling some regional transit business. And then I guess, not before our next meeting, which is two days from now, I'm not going to have any other meetings, but following that before our next meeting, we're going to the League of Cities. And when I get back from that, in fact, before that, I've got to go down and I'm on the Board of Directors at the Pacific Surfline Railroad, so we'll be taking care of the rail from San Diego up to here. Actually, it goes as far as San Luis Obispo and then buses up to here for our part, but we'll be doing that because we're dealing with a lot of bluff problems there too, just like we had on River Road, only a lot more severe right there at the ocean. We're dealing with that, and I'll do that on Monday, just before our meeting in Sacramento.
Very good. Real quick, you did, you are our voting delegate again for the league, aren't you, Fred?
Yes, I am, and I think you're my backup.
Right, okay, got that done the other day. All right. Who, like, Councilman Gregory?
There you go. We had our quarterly supplemental tax meeting, and we were spinning every penny on the roads. Thank you, Ditas, for all that work, and Frida, and her group. And then the most exciting thing I went to was the Restor at Habitat for Humanity. That was fun. So, but it's a really nice store, and they provide a lot of funding for the housing that they're building, and just a nice organization, but it's about time it came back, because I got a lot of stuff to give away and got a lot of stuff to buy. And just had a nice, safe, and quiet Labor Day, so it was good.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Councilman Bausch?
I would echo that the Habitat for Humanity is very habit-forming. It's a dangerous place. I've been back way too much. But congratulations to those guys and wish them a lot of success. We heard a lot about the teen center, very exciting, and glad that they're underway and wish them much success. Able to attend oath of office, so welcome to the new or newly promoted employees. It's always exciting to get that. I don't always make those, but it's fun to make that happen. The, I'll conclude right there, I'll stop. Thanks.
Very good. So my things that I did, of course, was actually housing constraints with Councilman Gregory during that meeting, and also the mayor's meeting in Pismo. And, um, also the mayor's meeting in, uh, Pismo with, uh, all the mayors, uh, very interesting meeting, of course, and to hear from all the other mayor, that, what they're doing with their particular cities and issues that they're following. So, um, we also, with, uh, our city manager, uh, we also went to the annual mayor's city manager grand jury meeting, which is kind of interesting, where we met with the grand jury, uh, team and all the other mayors and city council were talking across the table on what we like and what we are expecting them to maybe look at this next year. Um, did the ribbon cutting for the restore with Councilman Gregory and, and Councilman Bausch. I got to say something about that particular building. When I first came to Passo in the mid seventies, that was our old warehouse where we used to, it was, it was an old, old wooden warehouse. I must have unloaded a thousand doors in there, um, over the time. And finally we moved on to another location, but just to see the history of that corner, I think it's what the ninth and pine and the evolution over time, what, what's happened there. And granted, it's amazing store and people need to visit that and see what they have available for everybody. Um, ribbon cutting also for the educational employment, uh, employees credit union out here in the old, um, Arby's, not Arby's, but the Alpabees store. Um, we did that ribbon cutting last week. We also did the ground break, which is a 200,000 square foot building now by the airport for Wine Direct, very, very high end employer that's going to be, uh, basically moving our wine around the world. Um, and then also did the, uh, ground break again this morning, uh, with the pump track out at Farnesports. So quite a lot going on there, um, with me. And, uh, if anybody else has anything, Dale, you're standing.
Would anybody interested in knowing what happened at the Diablo decommission meeting this morning that I attended?
Yeah, go ahead if you want to record.
Okay. They're in a quandary.
So, uh, we really can't take public comment at this point.
Do it, all right. Okay.
If you wanted to share that at the next meeting.
Yeah. You don't want to violate the Brown Act, do you?
You can reopen it as a non-agenda item if you want. If you don't want to know...
Dale, sorry for asking you.
Dale?
I just thought you'd be interested.
Dale, you are interested in us not violating the Brown Act, so I hope you cooperate so we don't.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, it, yes, it is. The agenda, you're not on the agenda.
Stand by, guys. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna close it. You can talk with us individually, Dale.
Reopened at once already.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. All right. Upcoming events. Passerobles Youth Commission Advisory Committee meeting September 6th at 6, or excuse me, 5 p.m. We also have the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, September 11th, uh, 1:30. Passerobles Development Review Committee, September 11th, 3:30. We have the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission or Committee meeting also on September 11th at 4 p.m. Uh, Passerobles Planning Commission, again, September 12th, 6:30. Library Trust, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, September 14th at 9 a.m. Passerobles Development Review Committee again at September 18th at 3:30. The Passerobles Airport, which we heard about today, a 50th anniversary celebration starting , uh, at 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. out at the Passerobles Airport, that's September 23rd. The, uh, Passerobles Development Review Committee, DRC, again, September 25th at 3:30. Planning Commission, September 26th at 6:30. We have Development Review Committee again, October 2nd, uh, at 3:30 p.m. We have the final, and the next, actually, our next meeting for us, other than the special one, that's Thursday, is going to be October 3rd here in these rooms with, uh, 6:30 p.m. And also, which we need to reiterate too, we have the Mayor Martin Celebration of Life Wednesday in the park, September 27th, 5:30 to 7:00. So that's all we have at this point scheduled for our group. Anything else for the, for the order? Go ahead and have a motion to adjourn then.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Gregory, second by Bausch.